All right. It is seven o'clock according to my computer, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for Minnetrista for October 18th, 2021. First of all, just a reminder to me as well, turn your electronic devices off or on airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, I'd like to ask that you join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone. And first order, I would like to make some introductions here. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left, it's left, right? To my left, I have council members Pam Mortenson, John Chumpelin, Ann McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. And then on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Faussky. And then our public work superintendent, Gary Peters, a director of administration, Ellie Palfus. On my right, we have city administrator, Mike Veroni, our finance director, Brian Grimm. David Abel is our community development director. And then next to David, we have our city attorney with Kennedy engraved, Ron Beatty. And then our chief of police, Paul Falls. With that, is there any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Mr. Chumpelin made the motion, and Ms. Mortenson seconded that, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Next, we'll move on to special presentations. We have a couple this evening. First, we're going to start with a special presentation in recognition of our former city clerk, Chris Lindquist. I'm going to ask, we have a special guest with us this evening. It's Audra Edsel, and she is with the MCFOA. If you would come to the podium first and maybe explain what that is.
Thank you, mayor and council. MCFOA is the Minnesota Municipal Clerk and Finance Officers Association. And I am here tonight on behalf of MCFOA to present Chris with her resolution from MCFOA for her years of service. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read it.
Please do, thank you.
This resolution congratulates Chris Lindquist on her retirement, whereas Chris, city clerk, city of Minnetrista, a leader in the city of Minnetrista, announced her retirement in October 2021. And whereas Chris is an active, well-respected member of the community, an educator and a fine example of leadership. And whereas Chris started with the city in 2015 dedicating six years of service to the city of Minnetrista. Whereas prior to working for the city of Minnetrista, Chris worked in the cities of Des Plaines, Illinois, Park Ridge, Illinois, Coon Rapids, Minnesota, Rockford, Minnesota, Mount, Minnesota, and St. Louis Park, Minnesota. Whereas Chris was a member of the Municipal Clerk and Finance Officers Association of Minnesota since 2009. And whereas Chris, during her long tenure with the MCFOA, earned her designation of MMMC, and prior to that, her CMC also. She served honor and distinction on the following MCFOA executive board and several MCFOA committees starting in 2012. And most recently, in 2016 to 2021, she served on the MCFOA board. And in 2019 and '19, she served as our president. So I'd like to finish the resolution here. That was, there's a whole lot of committees she was involved in. Now, therefore be resolved that the MCFOA wishes to express their deep appreciation to Chris Lindquist for her many years of service and commitment to her community and the Municipal Clerks and Finance Officers Association of Minnesota. It went as hereof, it was signed by our president, Martin Bodie. So congratulations. And I just have to say, it's been an honor for me to be able to come here tonight to present this to Chris, so thank you.
And thank you for coming.
You guys want to stand up there, too?
Hey. Focus on those two.
The city of Minnetrista and staff and council would also like to recognize Ms. Lindquist for her years of service here and her dedication to our community. So whereas Chris Lindquist began her career with the city of Minnetrista in 2015 and has served as a city clerk throughout her employment tenure, providing excellent service to the city council, city staff, and its residents. Whereas Chris Lindquist completed all the requirements for her master municipal clerk, or MMMC designation in 2019, which is the highest level of certification achievable by a municipal clerk, and served as a president of the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association for one year from March 2019 to March of 2020. And whereas Chris Lindquist is recognized by the city council and city staff for being professional, hardworking, and maintaining a positive attitude. Chris's knowledge and commitment to continued education was an invaluable asset to the city of Minnetrista. And whereas the city of Minnetrista thanks Chris Lindquist for her nearly six years of service to the city of Minnetrista, and we wish you all of the best. Therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minnetrista commends Chris Lindquist for her dedication, enthusiasm, and public service given to the Minnetrista community. Is there a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0.
You will nail an official title. This is a kind of a line. But thank you. And thank you very much for your service.
And mayor and members of the council, I guess this will be the last time I speak with you. It was a great honor working for the city of Minnetrista. I learned a lot, made great friends, great colleagues. Just, I don't really have a lot to say, but thank you very much. I loved working here, and it was a very hard decision that I had to make, that I have to leave. I wish the city the best, and I know that later on in your agenda, you're going to be hopefully approving the new city clerk. And I know she'll do well for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've enjoyed working with you. So next, special presentation, we have Mr. Grimm.
Yes. Thank you, madam mayor and council. So this is just the regular financial update for third quarter 2021. Things are tracking pretty much as we'd expect at this point in the year, so I'll be brief and just maybe mention a few highlights. As far as our general fund revenues, the collections are about at 58% of our budget amounts, which is pretty comparable to previous years. I made a note near that last year, we did have the CARES funding come, came in, that sort of obviously skewed last year's number a little bit as far as budget to actual, but basically if you back that off, we were pretty similar as far as where we were at last year in 2020. Our, still our investment in market value adjustment is still negative. You probably noticed in the general fund, that just has to do with the way the interest rate and market conditions are. We hold our investments to maturity, so everything matures at par and not at a loss or anything like that. From the expenditure side, we're tracking about 75% year-to-date comparison to the budget to actual expenditures. In 2020, we were about that, a little less, at 71%. So still tracking good there. As far as, you can see the current, the cash and investment total is about 12.2 million. That's delineated in the attached report. Probably open it up for any questions from council, if there is any, and open there.
I probably ask this every quarter. Looking at the building permits, are we going to get the 675? I mean, $37,000 in September, you extrapolate that out for the next three months, we still only come in at 622,000. So do we do a lot of building permits, October, November, December?
Um, I think you're probably pretty accurate as far as we could end up a little short this year, and I think partially because just with, I think the council did see the fourth and fifth addition just come here recently. They basically ran out of lots in the, in the third addition. I know there is a couple model homes and some townhomes they're looking at doing yet this year. So we should have an additional eight to 10 to 12 units potentially this year. So we, I wouldn't be surprised for between 625 and 650, maybe 675. But to your point, I think we could be a little short this year, mainly because they ran out of lots, of existing lots in Woodland Cove, and now we're obviously doing the next two additions, so.
Okay. So then that leads, you kind of answered, that leads into the budget, because we budgeted 675 for next year with the new lot, or the additional lots. We shouldn't have an issue then with that for next year?
I don't believe so. I mean, what's any, I mean, it's on the, yeah. If market conditions stay similar, the same, I mean, basically with them having those lots to sell, we should, if, all things being similar, we should reach the 675 if market conditions or interest rates or something factor doesn't change drastically, demand, I guess, so.
Thank you.
It's interesting, because I had that highlighted, and I asked, I asked Brian about that earlier today, so, all right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for that update. So next, we'll move on to persons to be heard, which are none. And so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items you wish to remove? Okay. Otherwise, consisting of, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from October 4th, 2021. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from October 4th, 2021. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to accept our 2021 crack fill project. E is a resolution to adopt ordinance number 470 by title and summary for the ripery and viewshed ordinance. We did pass that last time when the two of you were not here, and we could not pass the ordinance by title and summary, because you need a four-fifth vote, just so you know. And then F is a resolution to replace the patrol vehicle. And G is a resolution, amended and restated resolution vacating portions of Lotus Drive. And H is a resolution supporting MCWD and their six-mile marsh prairie trail construction. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Motion has been made by Ms. Refkin, and seconded by Ms. McGregor. All those in favor will signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So we'll move on to our public hearings. And our first public hearing is a vacation of a portion of Woodland Cove Boulevard as requested by MI Homes of Minneapolis-St. Paul. I will hand that over to David.
Thank you, mayor and members of the council. This basically boils down to what I guess you could classify as clerical error with Woodland Cove fourth addition. It's very similar to an item that you just passed on your consent agenda, which would have been for G, the amended and restated resolution for a portion of Lotus Drive. So when both M and I and Gania went in to record their final plats for the additions that I just mentioned, Hennepin County noticed some, as I said, clerical errors essentially with how the plats looked. And in this case, there was a portion of Woodland Cove Boulevard that technically was not included in a previous vacation. So this is just fixing that clerical error, if you will, and the technicality would be we have to go ahead and hold the public hearing and actually vacate that portion of Woodland Cove Boulevard, so that M and I Homes can go ahead and actually record that fourth edition plat. So as we've done with any other requested vacation, we hold the public hearing, and then you do have a follow-up resolution that would vacate that portion of Woodland Cove Boulevard. Can stand for any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. Council, any questions? Okay. Otherwise, they would have a very short Boulevard. All right. So I will open up the public hearing. Public hearing is open. And if there's anybody that wishes to speak for or against, or has questions or comments regarding this, you may do so at this time. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and take it back to council. No questions, comments? So is there a motion for the vacation of a certain portion of the right-of-way of Woodland Cove Boulevard?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Mortenson made that motion, and Mr. Chumpelin seconded that. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Mr., do you need anything else? That's it? Okay. So next, so that was resolution number 165. Did you need that in the resolution, the number? Okay. Next, we have our temporary liquor license brew fest event. And that's approving a temporary one-day intoxicating liquor license for the Tonka Brew Fest on November 6th at Gale Woods Farm. And I, is that, that's the Rotary that does this, right?
Yes.
Okay. You want to go ahead?
Thank you, mayor. The Mount West Tonka Rotary submitted an application to host their annual Tonka Brew Fest event on November 6th, 2021 at Gale Woods Farm. The applicant has submitted all necessary paperwork, and because this event is supported by the city of Minnetrista, staff has not required the applicant to pay the $40 fee. This has not been required in the past. State statute requires that the city hold a public hearing in order to give the public time to speak on the issuance of this license. We did do, we did publish for the hearing, and as of today, I have not received any comments. William Pinnaker of the Mount West Tonka Rotary has passed the background check performed by the police department, and they issued the special events permit. So tonight, staff is recommending the approval of this one-day temporary on-sale liquor license to West Tonka Rotary for its Stone Fest event being held on Saturday, November 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Palfus. Any comments or questions? They've done this for quite a few years. Last year, of course, they didn't, but previous years, a really nice event, too, and it's for good causes, too. So this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open for anybody that wishes to, I'm sorry, I'm kind of chuckling because we have nobody in the audience, so obviously, nobody wants to make a comment, so I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to council. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the temporary one-day intoxicating liquor license for the Tonka Brew Fest on November 6th, 2021 at Gale Woods Farm?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. A motion has been made by Ms. Refkin, seconded by Ms. McGregor. All those in favor will signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So our business items, our first one is approve our promotion of utility billing recycling coordinator, so mouthful, for Don Matsko to our city clerk.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Tonight, the city council is being asked to approve a promotion for our utility billing recycling coordinator, Don Matsko, to city clerk. Following former clerk Lindquist's resignation, the city clerk position was posted internally for all city employees. Don's application was received, and she was then interviewed by myself, Mike Veroni, and Brian Grimm on October 7th. The personnel committee met on October 12th to discuss the clerk position and direct its staff to move forward with the promotion process. Attachment A establishes the conditions of Don's proposed promotion. The personnel committee recommends offering a starting rate of $30 per hour, which is a 5% increase over her current pay. Upon successful completion of a one-year performance review or the municipal clerk certification, whichever comes first, she will then receive a 2% pay increase. Just a little bit more about Don. She has served the city since 2013. She was originally hired as the utility billing specialist, and then promoted in 2017 as the utility billing recycling coordinator. With her knowledge of the organization and experience in her current position, we believe she will do well as the city clerk. After the approval of this promotion, staff will post her position, her former position, internally for one week. If there are no internal applicants, the position will then be posted externally. So we're asking approval of this promotion tonight and expect to transfer her over into that position next Monday, October 25th.
Thank you, Ms. Palfus. Council, questions? Comments? It's always nice to be able to promote from within, and yeah, the personnel committee met and reviewed this, and this is what the personnel committee is recommending, so if there are no further questions, is there a motion, is a motion to approve resolution number 166?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. So motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor will signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So next is approving a negotiating contract with executive firm for the city administrator search.
Me again?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The city council interviewed three executive search firms at the special meeting earlier tonight. At the work session, the council determined that they would like to move forward with Baker Tilly as the firm to conduct the search for the city administrator's search. Staff recommends approval of negotiating a contract with Baker Tilly for the city administrator's search with the parameters discussed at the work session.
Thank you. I don't think there's any questions we discussed at that length. And so we're looking forward to working with Baker Tilly on this project. And is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor will signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So next is a resolution to approve the embedded social worker agreement. I think we sort of already approved that, more or less, so, Mr. Falls.
Madam mayor and council, that is correct. At the May 17th council meeting, we did discuss the embedded social worker program in great detail, and at that time, the county was looking for a commitment from each of the agencies involved. There are seven with us included in order to keep the costs down. As you may recall, the county had received or secured a grant. Normally, this would be about $100,000 per year with the grant. They're covering a lot of that, so it brings the cost down to about $60,000 per year, which we're obviously sharing with other agencies. So with that, there's been a lot of work that has gone into this joint powers agreement since that commitment, and that is why it took so long. There's, like I said, seven agencies, including us, so everybody had to review it. Mr. Beatty did review the agreement and is, is good with that. So with that, I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution for the joint powers agreement with Hennepin County for an embedded social worker. And that is, the agreement's good for two years, so it will start January 1, 2022.
Right. And then Hennepin County is giving the grant for two years as well?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
So, Mr. Grimm, will be adding 8,600 into our 2022 budget?
I think it's already there.
Separate line item?
I think, yeah, this will probably be shown more, we'll be able to see it on the expenditure, yeah, we'll add that in and make sure that that's there. And then, I guess the other question I just thought of is, yeah, I guess whether we can pass on 10% to the city of St. Bonifatius for the contract, yeah, which would make sense, yeah.
I think, according to our contract, I would think we can.
It would be one of our operational costs, so yeah, I mean, not a ton of dollars for them either, but, so.
Madam mayor and council, I believe that would be appropriate, because they will be receiving the same services as us, so I'm sure that some of these services will be utilized in their city as well.
Okay. Good. All right. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 168, which is approving the embedded social worker agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And then, we need to call a special meeting to accept the bids for the well site drilling project, I believe, Ms. Faussky?
Yes, madam mayor, members of council. At the last meeting, the council authorized WSB to prepare a quote package for the test, to drill the test wells for wells eight and nine. With the expedited timeline, we certainly had folks working on it very hard, but we were unable to get the quote package out in time in order to give contractors a week to review them. The quote package went out on Thursday of last week, and quotes are due Thursday of this week. So we still are looking to expedite this, so that we, in the hopes that we can get this work done this year. And as we discussed at the last council meeting, since we weren't able to get those quotes in time for tonight's meeting, if council would consider calling a special meeting for those quotes, to accept the quotes and award the contract.
Okay. And so the, so they come in on Thursday, you have to tabulate the quotes or bids, and then would you be prepared then on Monday to present, to do a special meeting, so it would be a week from today?
Yes, madam mayor, we would certainly expedite that.
Okay. I did speak with engineer Faussky earlier. That would be the soonest we could do it, and I think we should do it sooner than later. If we wait till the next meeting, that's another week, and because we're running up against this winter months, we should probably award that contract next Monday if we can. And I, can I, would we have at least three available council members that would be available for a special meeting?
What time?
We can determine the time, what's best for, I'm available anytime, so what's best for you?
I would, I've got a PTA meeting Monday evening, so.
Do you want to do it during the day? I think staff would like that.
I would love to do it between 9:00 and 11:00, if that works.
That might work. John?
Monday afternoon, but not Monday morning.
Good. Would 12?
One?
Would one work? Okay. Would one work for you?
I will have to check on that.
Okay. I'll make it work for me. So I think you have a previous commitment, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to check. We know we have three, so let's call a special meeting for 1:00 Monday, October 25th, is it? I don't have a, okay.
Yep, yes.
All right. 1:00, October 25th, and I'm assuming you will send out a packet or information on, it may not come, I mean, we may have to look at it at the meeting.
Yes. Well, I, after talking to Mr. Johnson, I would anticipate we would have something out late in the day on Friday.
Okay.
That would be our goal, so that council can have the weekend to take a look at it.
Okay. All right.
Doesn't a special meeting have to be announced?
Yes. And so, we are announcing it now, so we're going to make, we're going to pass a motion and a resolution to have a special meeting on October 25th at 1:00, and then it will be posted. And because it's a, yeah, it has to be minimum three days, I'm sorry. And then, because it's a special meeting, the, we're going to state that the meeting is to award, to review, accept, review, and award contracts for the test wells, eight and nine. So that'll be the only agenda item.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion then to, let's see, call a spe, well, I'm going to call, I can call the special meeting, I think. Or do we need a motion?
Madam mayor and council, since you're here, I would recommend a motion.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to call a special meeting for October 25th at 1:00 here at City Hall for the purpose of reviewing, accepting, and awarding a contract for well siting and test wells eight and nine?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. We will see you next week. So that concludes our business items. We'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you, madam mayor and city council. I got a couple of items. I know Mr. Grimm has one item for sure, and Ms. Palfus will have one item. You don't see her on here. My two items, we did have a labor negotiation session last Thursday, the 14th, with our CSOs. I would say that didn't go swimmingly, it was kind of blah, so we got a little bit of work to do. I wish I could give you some more detailed information at this point in time, but I'm not going to, or don't want to. But I think there's nothing that's really crazy, we just need to kind of hash a few things out with them going forward. Probably being that we'll have another personnel committee meeting coming up. We're probably looking, not until November, to do this, based on, mostly based on the schedule of the business agent for the CSO union between now and, and the end of this month. And then, for me personally, I'll be out of the office for a couple of weeks on vacation in November, so it's going to get kind of dicey, maybe. Hopefully, we'll get it on the agenda for approval before the end of the calendar year, approval before the end of the calendar year, council meeting calendar year. So I don't think we're all that far apart, but they're, kind of they're digging their heels in on a few things, and so are we. So we'll just see how it goes. But I thought I'd give you a quick update that we did have that meeting, and we need to meet again in November. And then the final reminder I have is we meet two weeks again, two weeks from tonight, which is Monday, November first. So with that, Brian, Al, if you want to go first?
That's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Doesn't matter to me.
All right, Ally, you want to go first, or should I?
Make a quick.
I'll make a quick. And actually, for once, I have, I think, good news. Usually, I don't have good news too often. So as far as, I don't know if the council, I'm sure remembers the fun organics discussion from this summer, our work session. And one of the items that the council directed staff to do was to apply for a grant. And, you know, usually you apply for a grant, you know, how much, how often do you actually get one? Well, we did actually get twelve thousand dollars.
We got twelve.
So, you know, to basically help get our organics program. It's a, technically, it looks like it's going to be a two-year grant, but it, you know, there's, but it's basically to get our program off the ground and stuff and help defer help with some of those costs, obviously, of implementing our organics program. So, so we did, I think we were only one of three cities that applied.
Maybe that's what we got.
So maybe it was just right place, right time. So sometimes if you're good at paperwork, you can actually get, you know, some benefit from it. So we did get that approval at the Hennepin County level. So I just wanted to update the council on that.
Good, good. Ms. Pofus?
Yes. So we posted the vacant sergeant position on October fourth for one week. We received two applications, and we'll be holding interviews, one on, one this week and one next week. Following the interviews, the personnel committee will meet and provide a recommendation of approval for promotion at a future meeting. Along those same lines, we have Spencer Cook starting in two weeks from Wednesday, so October twenty-seventh. And we will be swearing in Spencer Cook, Jacob Terrace, and Nikki Myrie as police officers on November fifteenth.
And Nikki was hired.
She was hired last May.
Just, yeah, just as we're in our COVID mix. So we have not publicly sworn her in.
They did. I mean, she's officially a cop.
She's official, right.
But the ceremony for the public hasn't happened yet. So we're going to do all.
All three.
All three of them.
Yep. And that's all I have.
All right. So we'll move on to staff reports. Kathleen, anything?
The next mound fire meeting is November seventeenth. They will attend. I'm going to attend the St. Bonifatius on the eighteenth for Ann. And then I was wondering if Chief Falls could get it, give us an update on the body cameras, please?
Yes, counsel and, or mayor and counsel, we did actually receive the cameras last week, I think it was. So I've been trying to make arrangements with our outfitter, Action Radio, who has to install them. Fortunately, we have one squad that's in the garage that needs to be set up. They're grossly behind for various reasons. COVID has really done a number on them and the vendors. So we'll start installing those cameras within the next couple of weeks. We'll likely have to run concurrent systems because we won't get them all installed on the same day. It'll take weeks. So we'll have two different systems recording at the same time. And then we'll eventually, WatchGuard will actually send staff out here to set up the internal piece, the server and that, and then train staff on the new system. So the process will be starting here in a couple of weeks. But I'm hopeful that we'll be, get it completed before the end of the year. Thank you.
Good. Ann?
I attended the Gillespie Center twentieth anniversary. It was really well organized. I want to thank Ally for getting all the materials that we had from Minnetrista Table for the Saturday event. It was really a fun time. The Hennepin County K-nine dog event was absolutely fabulous.
Thank you.
And there was a fire truck there, and there was an emergency vehicle there. It was really quite wonderful, and the children that attended really had a great time. So it was such a good fundraiser. They're thinking about having another one very shortly.
John, anything?
We'll be attending Pennier's River Creek Watershed this Thursday, the twenty-first.
I attended the personnel meeting on the twelfth, and I will be attending the WCC meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Okay. So I attended the personnel meeting and also Northwest League, and Hennepin County received a lot of ARC dollars. And I think we should contact, and then some of it, it's going for broadband and things like that, but I'm not sure if it's appropriate or if it's going to be appropriated for things like what we need it for. But I think you should contact Kevin Anderson's office and find out who we can contact at the county because they also, and I have the numbers in my pocket here, but, so they have allocated all these different amounts for different various programs, but then they still have fifty-five million dollars that have been unallocated. And so even if the current dollars that are allocated for broadband or for electronic, whatever, maybe we could at least talk to them about somehow tapping into a little tiny bit of this fifty-five million that has not been designated yet. It just seems like we should be able to get some benefit out here from those dollars. So I would highly encourage us to contact Kevin Anderson's. He's our representative, his office, and maybe they can direct us to who can. And just kind of on a fun little note, so I was talking with a couple other mayors, and the Greenfield mayor said, well, they have the highest point in Hennepin County. And I said, no, 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 you do not. I said, I think we're higher than you. And then the Independence Mayor said, no, 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 we have the highest point. And I said, okay, bets on. Well, we won. Except, I don't think we're the highest, but we are higher than them.
Highest points in Minnetoka.
The highest points supposedly in Minnetoka, but we're going to verify that.
That's fine.
So anyhow, so it was a good meeting. And then also, I, we've been, I've been talking with staff regarding our water education program, and they'll be bringing something back next time?
Yes.
Next time. So you'll hang out. More to come.
So November first.
Yes.
Are we at the treatment plant?
Yes. So November first, we'll be starting early, three o'clock, we said?
I think so.
I think it's three o'clock. We will be getting, if we can, we wanted to do the ribbon cutting at the tower, and you'll get more info at the new tower site is kind of where hoping. So we'll let you know on that one. And if not, we'll just meet at the Kings Point Water Treatment Plant Facility for a tour. And Greg Johnson with WSB will be giving us a tour. And even though they didn't design it, they didn't construct it, we thought that might be more appropriate because of some of the issues that we've been having, and we can have some frank discussions. I believe that Gary Peters will be there. And is Mike Pollak going to be there as well?
Yes.
So we'll have a lot of experts that can maybe shed some light on this.
We can discuss the filters.
Yes. We can discuss any, anything pertaining to the water treatment plant. How is that? And October twenty-fifth is the planning commission meeting, and I will be there.
Okay.
And I think that's it. Anything else? All right. So with that, we can be adjourned, and I think Brian wins. He did say forty minutes. Forty minutes. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And actually, it's seven thirty-eight.
You can say forty minutes or less.
There you go.